We'll go ahead and get started if you join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I have invited Ed Selvich to open us in a word of prayer this morning, so thank you for coming.
This work?
I don't know.
It doesn't. It doesn't do that.
Let's pray. Father, we come before you, humbly come before you, and ask you to guide this council today as they talk about bridges and buildings and roads and other structures and things that are important to this county. Most of all, I pray that you will guide them as they do these, as they talk, as they negotiate, as they delve into these. They're talking about people at our county, that they will use great wisdom for the care and concern of all the people in the county. So, Lord, we call upon you to give them guidance, give them wisdom, and give them a sense of grace and mercy as well. We pray all these things in Christ's name. See you.
All right, we do have a few items on the consent agenda. I've got minutes from last month here that will pass around. And then also there are some transfers. Are there any transfers that anybody wants to pull out and talk about independently?
Move over to the consent agenda.
Okay, we've got a motion by Josh Plou, seconded by Tracy Martin, to approve the consent agenda as presented. I do just want to call out real quickly before we vote. The Highway is requesting a transfer into Hardware and Tools. And Scott, just as a note, he transferred out of Hardware and Tools last month. So, just want to try and minimize the in and out on that. So, if there's ever any question or anything, just reach out, but generally don't want to do that. So, that being said, we do have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries six zero. And for the record, Councilman Ethan Brown is absent. All right, so we'll continue on to review of financial reports, and I will start that discussion. I do want to report that county general balance as of July 31st is at 7.6 million, rainy day at 4.3 million, and riverboat at $317,000. Through the end of July, each department should be at a utilization percentage of about 58%. I would say between 55 and 60%. So, that being said, emergency management is at 52% year-to-date, the coroner's office is at 27%, local road and street at 50%, MVH at 39%, and Carroll Manor at 47% year-to-date. So, I will hand it over to Scott.
Thank you. Mine are in the low 60s, 62, 63%. Transfer stations are 49%. I see no concerns with any of my departments.
I'm sorry, my computer's rerouting. I didn't have any information.
Good. All right, thank you very much. So, I will hand it over to Beth with the auditor's report.
Okay, I sent out three calls, I think it was 13. Do you guys have any questions on those?
I continue to really like the independent sheets that are scanned in, so thank you for doing that.
And I kind of forgot, I'm going to go and have to send you the drains where I can split that. And I forgot until I got mine. The other thing is the salary ordinance, we did some amending on the DNA. 911, sorry. I'd like to have a couple signed, but it doesn't matter which ones. But you amended the lead coordinator's salary in the communications and hard-time communications till the next payroll cycle. So, right now they're earning that. They actually approved it, amended it on the 7th, but they didn't approve the salary ordinance.
But it was already approved. It was already approved, so it should be effective. And you highlighted the ones that.
As long as they're amended, the salary is good.
Yep. All right, so next up on the agenda would be Shane.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Council President, County Council. After the last meeting when we discussed the opioid settlement funding, I'll be requested to hear from Mental Health of America, so I'm pleased to introduce Brandy Christiansen and Michelle Zerembah from MHA. They've got a prepared presentation for you, and then they can answer any questions that you may have about the crisis response. So, follow me over to Brandy, thank you.
Good morning. I do have a prepared statement. I was advised that maybe I would be better doing it off the cuff, but it's usually my experience that if I have something prepared, I should read from it. So, I wanted to thank you for giving us the opportunity to address you today. My name is Brandy Christiansen. I'm the president and CEO of Mental Health America, Wabash Valley, Virginia. Our organization has been serving the greater Lafayette area for just about eight decades. And today, I wanted to elaborate on our initiatives and proposal creation of a mobile response team. We are, about three years ago, we were asked to open up an office here in Carroll County from the community foundation. And this was a result from the community conversations that they had had in Clinton County, Howard County, and Carroll County to identify and assess gaps in service provision. And then health substance use and transportation came to the top, as they did in the other three counties. So, they asked us to take on the challenge of opening up an office, and it aligned with our mission and our strategic plan, and so we gladly did that. Our purpose was clear to come to Carroll County. It was to offer navigation and peer support services to provide individuals in Carroll County the opportunity to have another option other than just the CMHC, the Community Mental Health Valley Oaks. And so, a big part of that is the creation of a mobile response team. Are any of you familiar with the 988 crisis model? Okay, well, this is coming from SAMSSA, the federal, not the federal government, but the federal experts on mental health. And basically, the crisis now model is a person called, someone to call, someone to respond, and a place to go. And if you're familiar at all with the landscape through the past few decades, there's not really a lot of places to go. So, at Mental Health America, we've had a crisis center for the past 51 years that served 14 counties. And now we are a 988 state contracted center. It used to be the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline. So, that is the component of someone to call. When we talk about someone to respond, sometimes law enforcement isn't necessarily the most appropriate person to help someone de-escalate from suicidal ideation or mental health crisis. And sometimes they need a little bit of assistance with experts that are used to de-escalating the folks and really so that they don't end up in jail or in the hospital. As far as a place to go, we have some options in the surrounding counties. It's getting better. It's not great, but the creation of a mobile response team to be tied into the existing 988 center affords us the opportunity to be able to transport those people and take the load off of the local law enforcement who, you know, are expected to do a great deal of things, and this really isn't their problem in the first place. So, now you can tell I'm actually scooping off the cuff. But these are folks that have, they pose no threat to the community at large, right? And they don't require medical clearance. So, this is part of the national movement. The state is going to do it anyway, and we are already kind of uniquely qualified to do this. Just so you know, we have a 99.2% success rate at de-escalating folks on the phone. So, a lot of the stuff we would be doing is plugging them into our existing framework, which is that navigation piece, and then that peer support to support someone emotionally while they're waiting to get into services or, you know, if they're having insurance issues and things like that. So, we do that already. Michelle Zerembah has been here operating for the past year, working with law enforcement, probation. We know we're waiting for some elections to kind of pan out so that we can get the right people in the right seats. And we have been prepared to enact this mobile response team. And we are hopeful that you will agree that we are the best people to do that and that we are aligned with your community values and that the funding that you're receiving for the opioid settlement would be best suited to help us in that endeavor. And so, what does that look like? Obviously, that's a stage collaboration with law enforcement. Initially, it would be an on-call. We would strategically assess the demand for those after-hour services, so we would have someone that would be on standby. And then we would work with law enforcement to create those workflows. We want to make sure that we understand each other, that we have the same language. We're prepared and ready to do some joint trainings. We have a crisis intervention trainer that is a former sheriff's deputy for a typical county and a retired marine. And he is ready and able to be able to have some more succinct trainings to get us all on the same page, make sure that we're speaking the same language, that we understand each other, when is it appropriate to utilize our services. And then we'd like to have some continued meetings to make sure that any adjustments that need to be made are made immediately so that we're not rendering our efforts fruitless, right? So, yeah, so in conclusion, I'm going back to my script. We express our gratitude for your attention today. I know it's a lot, and I'm open to any types of questions. I didn't bring a big presentation. I do have them if you're interested. But we stand ready to serve Carroll County and collaborate with you and with law enforcement to enhance the mental health and crisis support and intervention. And we're confident that combined with your support, our mobile response team will lead to safer, more resilient communities. So, I'm open to questions.
What's the annual cost for this program?
I did bring some, a brief budget. I brought five copies. I'll need one to go through it, but I'm happy to share these. And I broke them down in personnel costs and some ancillary costs. But my prediction is, and there's no way to know, like, how many calls will be going on until we actually do it, but looking at $200,000 a year. That would include our current infrastructure, our navigator. Michelle has recently got her MSW, so we would appoint her to being an intake coordinator. And then we would have three other employees that would be working here during the day and then rotate on-call as needed. And if we found that there was a need for 24/7 services and having someone on that night shift, and it wasn't a burden to taxpayers and to our agency if it was found to be necessary, then we would go ahead and make adjustments at that time.
So, you could cover other counties with that same force then?
We could. I mean, we really, that would be the smart thing to do is to work with white counties. A lot of other counties have mobile response teams already. In fact, most of them do. But we figured that together we could be stronger and fortify one another. So, our goal is to eventually have an insular kind of on-call throughout all the counties that we serve. But in Carroll County, we want to have particular focus and attention because we have a moral and administrative obligation to serve this community.
With the opioid money coming in a white county, it looks like, you know, you could go to them and push the program and then share the personnel and spread out the.
Yes, sir.
The cost, spread the cost out.
Yes.
Two counties.
Yes, sir. And I had created a little pie chart, but we're really frugal in our office. And so, even though I tried to override as CEO the color option on the printer, we are color Nazis and because it just saves so much money. So, you can't really tell, but I did an income pie chart, which I'm happy to share as well. But we will have access to some United Way funds because you probably know that the United Way here is now being covered by Lafayette. We anticipate that we'll be able to bill eventually Medicaid at about 31% of our expenses. We anticipate corporate and individual donors to increase as we demonstrate how valuable we can be to the community. And we have the community foundation's support. So, the opioid settlement funds would really be a very small percentage of our budget.
What is the grant again?
So, the settlement amount, I think it was, I thought I said around $75,000 for last year. I think it was somewhere between 80 and 90, but an expected of 20,000-ish, somewhere between 18 and 26 or 28 a year until year 2038. So, there's a larger amount year one, and then about 20,000 for the next 15 years.
Yeah, so year one was $87,585. We get $16,616 in '23, $20,589 in '24. And then, like Shane said, anywhere between $19,000 and $28,000 every year after until 2038.
So, if we continue like the program after the first initial year, and if we.
Well, that's my, that's my concern because.
Yeah, is that what you're saying?
No, ma'am. No, what I'm saying is, I put that in, and so, without the color, it's hard to tell. But really, it's a, for the overall budget, it's a very small portion that we would allocate that would be coming through. I'm not asking.
So, this $200,000 is not for Carroll County?
It is for Carroll County. However, we have additional revenue streams that would be budgeted for this project. It would not only be coming from the opioid settlement fund. We were aware of the limitation of the fund.
So, how would we know what Carroll County's responsibility would be each year?
Yeah, what, I think what Tracy's asking, and my concern as well, what would be the net new cost to the county out of our general available funds each year that we would have to pledge?
I hadn't even counted on any additional funds. When I wrote this budget, this is with revenue streams that I already, I've already secured or anticipate that I will secure.
So, the only commitment that the county would need to give, based on what you're saying this morning, is to dedicate the settlement funds.
Yes, sir. That was the, that was my understanding, and that's how I prepared my budget.
Yeah, okay.
Now, if you think we're doing great and you want to help us raise a barn, you know, that's great. We can talk in a couple of years. But I did not come here today to ask for more money than the settlement.
Okay, yeah, that's good clarification. Does that make sense to you?
Yes, thank you.
So, when do, like, when do we have to make a decision on this then? Shane?
Well, it's your discretion, so whatever your timeline. I guess I'll leave it to Brandy. After you guys approve it, and I think you'll deem the additional appropriation of probably the advertising period and the public hearing and all that, so it's going to take a little bit of time just to get the ball moving. Then the commissioners will have to approve any contract. So, we're looking at a minimum of two or three months administratively just to have the funds ready.
When does the grant funding come in?
It depends on when the attorney general sends it.
We received last year's.
We received, right. I know it was a struggle last year. I think they probably sent it four to six months later than they anticipated. But I imagine in the future, it'll become a little more streamlined.
So, you're just needing a blessing today of that, yes, we are allowed the grant money to be used for this program?
Yeah, we're asking to move forward with the additional appropriation or whatever the proper steps are to be able to use these funds for a mobile response team, at which point we would go before the commissioners to approve any contract that we need with Mental Health of America. And in terms, I guess I'd leave it to Ms. Christiansen as to when you think, say, the money's available today, how long you think it's going to take to be up and running?
Well, I really enjoyed your term blessing because that is, you know, internally at MHA, that's what we're looking for, is that blessing so that we can then work with our law enforcement to start having these conversations.
So, is that, at least one option would be just if you're in favor of the idea, you want to give a motion, second, and a vote on moving forward that you believe that this is appropriate use, then I think that would tick off the process. It's going to come back from additional appropriation. Am I laying it out the way you think it would go?
I was, I was looking at the financial before.
Just a motion, this council approves the use of the opioid funds for this purpose.
We're not appropriating them. No, sir, you are not. It's a qualified use of them.
Absolutely, yep.
Is the mobile response team, is that kind of a commonality for the state of Indiana or is this more particular to our area?
Well, the state of Indiana is, and I have to be very careful to speak on behalf of the state of Indiana based on some language in our contract, but my observations from most of the other counties in the state is that they already have an existing mobile response team. And my understanding is that all counties need a mobile response team in some form or fashion to be able to, to be able to be part of the 988 crisis continuum.
Okay. I didn't know if it was a commonality throughout the state of counties.
Carroll County has been, is one of the last.
I'd make a motion that it is appropriate use of the opioid fund to fund a mobile response team.
Sir. Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Paul Ryder, seconded by Josh Plou, that we pursue utilizing the opioid settlement funds specifically for this mobile response team. Any other questions or comments?
I just want to clarify for the rent because we're just saying that it's an appropriate use. We're not in any way incorporating the dollars.
I agree.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries six zero.
We have two different ones, restricted and unrestricted.
That's correct.
Okay, so do we have one?
Yes.
We also have another one, but that's the judge's opioid grant. I think that's different.
I do have a question, ma'am, and it's Council President. Would it be the next council meeting that we do additional appropriations, sir?
I think it would be specific to the commissioners agreeing to the contract.
So, you want them to agree to the contract before we appropriate it, Josh? I mean, we get advertised today, so we'll counsel.
Yep, and I'm fine with doing that if that's what council wants to do. But I do think we've got to wait until the contract is approved to.
Okay.
So, what is the financial account, though, you want to advertise?
It's the balance.
Yeah, it would be.
$87,000 first year.
It's around $88,000. Do you have a contract prepared?
You know, I can get one, I can have a attorney.
They meet back here on the 21st.
21st.
Of September, and I could present it to the county commissioners.
It would be one day, right?
No. I mean, yeah, it is, but it's slightly late for the agenda right now. September 5th.
September 5th.
September 5th, what time? Absolutely, thank you.
And then would you like, assuming that the commissioners approve the contract, subject to appropriations fund, would you like everybody back here for the additional appropriation? Or would I suffice?
I feel like you would suffice.
Thank you, Council.
All right, thank you.
So, then we are going to advertise.
Do we have consensus to advertise that? Josh, you're here. Let's keep that.
Right now, yes.
All right, next on the agenda is Jamie Smith with Carroll Manor.
Hello. Over the weekend, we had a lift station problem at Carroll Manor. Our lift station had stopped pumping. It ended up in the end being due to a faulty circuit board. It happened Saturday evening, and I had called Steve Pearson to ask for some guidance. FJF, which is the company that installed the lift station. I guess the owner has retired, his grandson had taken over, and we couldn't get a hold of him. There's no phone number, the forwarding phone number, I guess. So, Steve had suggested that I call Hoosier back to come out and get it pumped out. And they came out and did that three times over the weekend, free of charge, to help us out. And I have the paperwork here from them for that. He also suggested that I call Climate Tech to, this was a misunderstanding on our part. He didn't say to get a quote. He just said call Climate Tech, since we couldn't get a hold of FJF. So, I did, and they said they'd be out Sunday morning to see what, if it was a bad pump or what was wrong. In the meantime, Shane Chapman had phoned in phone number for FJF. The grandson had taken it over and called him. So, they both showed up at the same time, I guess, Sunday morning. Climate Tech presented the impression that they were going to install a pump or the circuit board, whatever was wrong. And so, I have an estimate from them what it would cost to get the pump, but they were upset that it wasted their time, I guess. And it was in this estimate. Um, I just got it late last night, so I don't have copies, but I can get copies for all of you. FJF ended up pumping it out. They had to do some rewiring, um, to make it last until, and add a second flow bar. And there's two pumps in the lift station. The second pump was not kicking on and it didn't have a flow bar. So we installed a flow bar there and did some rewiring. And, um, he just got back to me this morning, was a quote, well, since I've been here. His name's Tanner Fluck from FJF. Um, and he said for the work that he did over the weekend, it was eleven hundred dollars, including all the pumping because he had to come back out and pump one less time Saturday, Sunday afternoon. And he said it's going to be about two weeks to get the part for him and for the part and the labor will be seven hundred and fifty dollars. Climat Tech had quoted for just the, um, the circuit board, um, and installing that, four hundred and sixty-three dollars. Nothing for labor because they, they didn't do anything. They went out there and they checked it out and determined that it was the circuit board. And they went to see how it should be and who had the part.
So who called the second company?
The, so we were trying to get a hold of FJF, which installed it and has done all the work on it. When I called Steve Pearson, he suggested Hoosier VAC so they could get it pumped, um, and because they do hackers. And then as far as the circuit board goes or pump, whatever they needed, he suggested I call Climat.
Okay, so how did two people show up at one time?
I called Climat Tech and then Shane had gotten the person that owns FJF. So Shane going to call me back, going to tell me that so that I can tell Climat.
Shane.
Shane Chapman.
Who's Shane?
That does.
Yeah.
Ainge, you can't call. He does the
But I think the big surprise, I think Steve had to get a quote from Climat Tech, not to have the amount.
Yeah. So then when they called me from Carroll Manor on Sunday morning, then I said, I'm sorry, Steve had just called and said, I just wanted a quote from them because we got a hold of the original company that installed lift system or lift station.
So any contact in charge and anything that just left you with a quote?
Like, a quote for the pump, yeah, because they just went out there and I don't know what happened between them there because I was not there Sunday morning. I just got the phone calls.
You had a quote for the pump, so that was four sixty-three.
Four sixty-three for a circuit board. It did have no B P I.
But it sounds, but it sounds like the two entities aren't, I mean, we've got apples and oranges.
So why FJF now?
It is the circuit board. Climat Tech and FJF both agreed the circuit board. The pump needed, that second pump wasn't kicking on. It would manually, but it wouldn't. So they, FJF put the flow bar on that second one. I don't know why it didn't have one together, but
So the part that's coming in two weeks is on the same
Is the circuit board.
Okay, so one is four sixty-three and one seven fifty-six. Common sense you buy the G board.
But is that what you did or where are we at?
Oh, I'm waiting because this meeting could
Okay, right. So you want us to
But we still have eleven hundred dollar bills from FJF for the work that they did over the weekend, um, doing rewiring, installing the flow bar, pumping again.
Well, it makes sense to pay the four fifty-three for the lift and new circuit board to be.
Are they, are they out of money?
So wait, Jamie. So your, your two betters are F
FJF.
And Climat?
And Climat. And I asked Shane, but
But FJF has installed and maintained this the entire time.
They, yes, they, in twenty nineteen, I believe, or it might have been twenty twenty-two, they also, before I was there, they had come and made new parts. There were some parts that were discontinued. They've done all the work on that lift station since it was installed.
And they currently have done work on it too.
Yeah.
So, I mean, like, I, I don't know if this is a no-brainer because, like, you know, a company that may not want to work, I mean, they
Right.
They're in this business.
Right.
So like, I mean, I, the point of the story is, I don't care. It's a management decision from your perspective, like, who's the right person to use? Because just because they're a low cost provider doesn't mean that
Right.
the system is correct. I don't, I don't care.
Right. Right.
And like, if, if they, if they said, I won't work on it because Climat Tech could work on it, now I'm, you know, like, now, you know, we're out. Then that, that puts us in an awkward
And they didn't say that.
That puts us in an untenable situation. So I'm, I'm, one of my stories, I don't, like, you have to make a management decision. Like, who's the right person to work. Obviously, we want to save money if we can, but you got to look at the bigger picture. You can't just look at the costs.
Right.
Do you have the funds, do you have the money to pay it or?
Yeah, so that was my next question.
Why are, why are, yeah, why are you here?
I was just, I was just trying to be respectful and let you guys know what was going on because it was, you know
Yeah, eleven hundred, give you one more time to plug, so.
Yeah, it was just eleven hundred dollars from FJF. And he just sent it in an email. He didn't give me a paper, um, for work done and come nine hundred and six hundred over the weekend.
How were your funds when you, are you, do you have money?
Um, in the
Well, she come out and made this money.
Correct. You have money in the line?
Yes.
So, so there's money in the line, money, there's cash operating balance?
It's all together. It's in here.
What, what? So this is not the normal operating balance?
Yeah, because we gotta, you have to decide your own amount and then you give
That's true. But we can
Do that, I mean, advertise it.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I'm on your
Well, we just need to advertise one game.
Expose one.
We want to cover the cost of the work this week, though.
Okay, so this is my question, like, is, because I thought the answer to my question would be yes, but it's not. Like, is there money in the line, the maintenance line per budget, maybe? I think
I think there is.
Yeah, because I have it.
So that's why I was trying to say, and like, this seems like a non-issue. The only question, i- if there's money in the line, the only other question is, is there operating capital in the fund? And if you've answered both of those as yes, then this is not an issue for today.
Yeah.
The thing I'm saying is
No, it's not, I guess, no.
Financial reports that you get and read. Where's your reports, Jamie, here?
In my vehicle. I didn't bring them all in.
I'm looking, sorry.
Well, with the pumps working, it just
It's, it's been fine since Monday.
We shouldn't have to pump it again.
No.
Good, good.
It hasn't
Really, really, we didn't, they kind of hooked with us.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but this is a management thing. This should not be coming to the council for a eleven hundred dollar bill.
If you have a contract, one of them is agreed, meaning on Monday. And that money in your maintenance fund is through commissioners, is in their budget. So, um, without looking at your degree, I could try to look up in this and
Okay, I have another one.
No, it's not, it's in commissioners' budget, for the maintenance.
They're talking about the money that, the number of the money that was released.
Because the only
It's not
Six hundred and sixty-five.
It's still sitting in the commissioners' budget.
Well, that's in the capital improvement one, right?
Yeah, which this is
But, but what's the, what's the
It is in the maintenance, that will maintenance of Carroll Manor. That's money that we have not put that in the commissioner's budget or advertised all of it. We only did one certain bill. Then I advertised the bills that Paul Ryder brought in.
So this is where we're breaking, where I'm breaking down. You are, are you saying that there's not enough money in the forty-nine hundred budget to pay this?
I agree with you. Yeah, no, there isn't.
There is, so she's just not adding her cash on?
Right, the only thing she could do is take out her donation fund.
Which is what we
And that's, that she needs to complete her donation fund before the twenty thousand will be in there.
Yes.
But she also has money that everybody has been arguing about, how much it's going to stay in, about the maintenance fund.
But it's not a maintenance fund, it's capital fund. It has historically where it's been. Now, we've gotten a little level with that.
So do you think this should qualify now?
I think this is
She has, she has money to pay it. I don't understand why it's even being presented to us.
Okay, well, let me, let me clarify. I, I talked to her over the weekend. I asked her that she be put on the agenda. So that's on me because a lot of this, we talk about every month. Where's, where's Carroll Manor? What are these invoices? What are they doing? Why are we being asked to pay this and that? So I asked her to come here and explain what has happened and what is going to be the result of these invoices. So that's on me. The the, the maintenance fund being only, uh, now, based on our conversation today, being only allowable as capital improvements, um, is something that was previously lost on me. I've been referring to it publicly and personally as a maintenance fund. So when I hear a, a lift station pump goes out or a circuit board goes out, I think that's maintenance. And so
Well, it's not like the furnace. We did put in brand new furnace, did we?
Yeah.
Or did we?
We did, yeah.
But still
And that's why I thought it was, it qualifies as capital, so it was like, it was a whole new, just this is just maintenance of an existing system.
Anyway, it's not going to have to decide today. It's for commissioners.
But, but let's make it clear, as far as you go ahead and as far as you go ahead and, and ordering it, or, do you guys feel like she can't make the decision to go ahead and get the, get the circuit board ordered? Is that what your
I, I think that she absolutely, I think that's what Tracy was saying and I agree with her. It's like, this, this doesn't need to come before us because there's a we already, we already passed a plan.
I was asking, I was kind of just letting you know what's going on.
Yeah, and that's, and that's what I asked her to do, is come and, like, communicate to us what is happening, what is going on.
Yeah, I mean, this is a good learning opportunity. I mean, like, so, I mean, I mean, from my perspective, this is just just, like, if you have the money and if you have the cash on hand in your fund, we don't need to take action. That's a management decision.
You're going to have to take that, you know, sure.
Right, which cash on hand includes forty-nine hundred and your donation.
But I do agree with Tim, since this is a, I'll call it a, a, a Carroll Manor is been up in the air now. I mean, I think it's, it's good that you, as a department head, that you keep us up to date on what's going on in case financial problems are coming. And that, that lift station wasn't installed when the furnaces were and all that, so they're all kind of fifteen years old, so.
So, I just looked it up. There, there is, and by far have money in the forty-nine hundred to pay for it. I don't know if there's cash.
You've got, that is at the end of
July.
July. Right, can't raise a lot.
Okay, so in the last fifteen days, there's been more than
Well, she said two.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not cash. I'm not about money on the line. So if her cash position
Well, if you don't have cash
That's what I'm saying, not cash position. Right, that, that's your, what you're saying.
I'm saying there's not enough cash.
Okay, then ask about trade, or I mean
Any more residents for me?
Um, I have two applications out, but I mean, we'll see.
What's the census range?
Sixteen.
And have you adjusted rates since February?
Um, I may. I'm going to ask to do the, the eight point seven percent. Eight point seven percent because that's what the social security increase was, so I didn't want to jump too much more than that right now. And if I need to raise them again next year because I heard that social security may increase again, um, then I'll do that.
Do people pay, under the social security, or why would you bring the two together?
So, I mean, I don't know. I just figured
Well, I mean, your costs are your costs.
They haven't raised rates in so long and I didn't want it to be like a smack in the face to those people to pay because in the past they didn't raise them.
I'll say this once again, the Manor is a business.
I know that.
You have to find out what it costs to run your business. You have to cut your expenses to run your business.
We found out how much it costs to feed people, then we got our budget cut by thirty thousand dollars in the food line.
And, and that's, that's part of it, but once you figure out how much it costs to run the Manor, then you start evaluating and putting in your income and you, and you start, I mean, I don't, do you know how much?
I don't want to be able to say.
No.